Looks like Jason coming in now.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the regular council meeting. City of Gulf Shores, February the 22nd. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Steve Jones to lead us with the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all join me in thanks, please? Father God, thank you for this day and for this milder weather you have shared with us. It is easy to become discouraged when the days are dark, but we try not to be discouraged as we should put our trust in you, as we know bright days to which we are accustomed will return. In Isaiah 41:10, you say, "So do not fear, for I am with you; do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you; I will uphold you with my righteous right hand." We can find ourselves in difficult situations, and if we don't fix our attention on your Son Jesus, it's easy to get dismayed. Because we also find ourselves under fire so often, we must also be growing in our awareness of your empowering presence. Have us listen with open minds and hearts to those that reach out to us and consider all that we can before making decisions that we strive to make honest and fair. Please watch over those that serve to protect us both here and away and bring their families a spirit of peace with knowing thoughts that they will return safely home. We thank you for your seeming hand of favor upon our city, and we pray for its continuance. It is a lot to ask, and we do so in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to make this through the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garris?
Here.
Mr. Sonnet?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Dyken?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mayor Craft?
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes. We have two sets to consider tonight, the first of which is the regular council meeting of February the 8th.
Motion to adopt February 8th regular council meeting, 2021.
We've motioned a second to approve those minutes. Has submitted any discussion or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll abstain. I was not here. So those regular minutes are approved. The next item is the February 15th council work session meeting minutes, which are what we'll be considering tonight. They're submitted for approval.
Move for approval of the February 15th, 2021 council work session minutes.
Second?
Have a motion and second to approve these minutes. Have submitted any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Staying.
One abstention. Councilman Garris duly noted.
Excuse me, I think I'm supposed to abstain on the 8th. I got confused there. I don't think I was here either on the 8th.
Okay.
Okay. Wanda, you got that?
I do.
Okay. So with one abstention, on the 15th, the work session meeting minutes, they are approved. Next item is approval of expense vouchers and $691,679.19. Cindy, any additional? That looks to be fairly normal. Nothing additional. Those approved expense vouchers are submitted for approval.
Move for the approval of expense vouchers as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the expense vouchers as listed. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those expense vouchers are approved. The next item is a presentation for Arbor Day 2021. Mark?
Yes, sir. We've got...
You can start with presentation, please.
So we've got the beautification boards here tonight to give us a little information about Arbor Day, what's coming up this Saturday. And so if I'd ask Mary Wayne and the rest of her team, if they'd like to come up and do a brief presentation on the Arbor Day celebration we'll have this Saturday.
Thank you, Mark.
Welcome to my world.
Good afternoon. The members of the beautification board appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Gulf Shores and its residents through participation on this board. I'm Mary Wayne Gilmore, and I serve as chairman. Lydie Powell serves as vice chairman. Brooke Taylor, who is not with us today, is corresponding secretary. Matt Lutkin is publicity. Linda Bender, Marlene Jaunt, David Mayfield, and our newest member Zeddy Bauer complete our membership. This year, we celebrate 34 years as an Arbor Day Tree City. Additionally, the Arbor Day Foundation notify the city of Gulf Shores that Gulf Shores has earned recognition as a 2020 Tree City USA. This award recognizes that our city leaders place a priority on the planting and care of trees. The members of the beautification board support a tree ordinance that will save trees in our city. It's our desire to see a comprehensive plan, to save as many trees as possible, and to develop in developing areas, plant as many trees as possible. We want to replenish and replace what we've lost. We'd like to note how much appreciation we have for Noel Hand and his crew, the Parks and Recreation, the Communication Department for always supporting our projects in what we're doing. And Lindsay Hart, a big shout out to you because you have publicized Arbor Day, and I know we're going to have lots of people there. It's now time to replant. There are Arbor Day celebrations all over Baldwin County. All of them are being successful, and we know that this one will be successful, too. The Arbor Day program is made possible simply because of the hard work of Harlan Harrison and the students in the Gulf Shores High School Environmental Program under Will Tuggle. This year, our program's going to be a little bit different. It's going to be a drive-through, which means you pull up, you are handed a packet of information, you select four trees, you drive on through. Those of you familiar with the elementary car line, this will be so easy for you. The trees are brought and put into the trunk of your car, and before you leave, turn on the back of the packet of information, because if there is a green tree sticker, you have won one of the coveted fruit trees. So you just drive on down, pick up your fruit tree, and exit the area. We are very pleased this year that we're able to do this. With so much COVID impending upon and restricting so much of what we do, we were so afraid we wouldn't be able to have our program like we always have. We're having it. It's not like we always have, but we hope for it to be that way in the future. I would like to thank Mark Ackerman for being the guiding hand on the beautification board. He has single-handedly guided us and helped us begin to achieve and attain the goals that we are setting. So, Mark, thank you very much. It's the belief of the members of the beautification board that to plant a tree is to plant hope. So we look forward to seeing all of you and all of our residents coming out Saturday to Gulf Shores Elementary School and picking up some trees that you can plant and to plant hope. Thank you.
Mary Wayne and the board, given the effects of the devastating effects on trees in our community from Hurricane Sally, this could not be more important for us to start replenishing that and replanting trees. So I, like you, hope we have a big turnout and that people will go home, plant, and take care of these trees so that they can regrow. Thank you for what y'all do. Mark?
Yes, you can pull the flyer back up. Just to give you a quick, just for everybody listening in and watching at home, this year's tree selection will be the persimmon, the pecan, the witch hazel, the turkey oak, bald cypress, and the red bane. We'll have 100 of each tree to give away, and all you have to do is show that you have a Gulf Shores address on your driver's license, and you'll get a choice of four of these trees, in addition to the trees and the fruit trees that Ms. Mary Wayne mentioned earlier. Will Tuggle's crew has been working diligently with Dan Bond through his Small Town Big Trees program, and they'll have some additional trees. We're not sure what the volume of those trees are, what species they'll have, but they're going to have some additional trees that the kids have grown in themselves that they'll give away. It's just kind of an extra bonus this year because we have lost so many trees. So we should have a little more information on that, but they'll be there as well handing out some additional trees once we go through the formal Arbor Day tree selection.
And that is this Saturday, this coming Saturday?
This Saturday from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m., but we'll keep giving out trees as long as we have them. So we'll start at 8:30 in the morning at the Gulf Shores Elementary School.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. The next item is a public hearing on an ABC license application. Pinkus Beverages, Wanda, you want to explain that?
Yes, sir. The Pinkus Beverages, doing business as Al's Liquor, has applied for a lounge retail liquor Class II package license. The business will be located at 160 Cotton Creek Drive, Suite 215 in the Public Shopping Center. They have been through the departmental review, and a public hearing was advertised for this council meeting today. So following the successful public hearing, the application will be ready for council consideration.
Thank you, Wanda. Any questions on this application from the council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to this consideration? Seeing none, this action is available on approving or denying this license application.
Move for the approval of the ABC license application for Pinky's Beverage, Inc., DBA Al's Liquor.
Second.
A motion and second to approve this resolution as presented. Excuse me, it's an ordinance. This ordinance, which is number... No, it is a resolution. I'm looking at the next one.
It's just a motion, no?
It's just an application for consideration. Got ahead of myself. So any more, any questions from the council? This is subject for approval by the council. Is there a motion?
We've got a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry about that, folks. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, another ordinance. This is an ordinance 2009 to amend the code for motor-driven cycles. Deputy Chief Dan Niedemeyer is going to introduce this ordinance.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bring before you today a proposed amendment to the motor vehicle ordinance here in the city of Gulf Shores. This is a pretty serious public safety matter that's occurring on the streets of Gulf Shores. The police department did a review of everything that occurred with regard, our calls for service and the accidents regarding...
Mark, do you sneak the clicker away from?
I have a summary of the accidents, and basically what we found over the course of reviewing these is they're preventable. Most of them occurred by skill set of the operator, skill level of the operator, and then unlicensed, what appeared to be unlicensed operators. So calls for service, and this is in 2020 alone, calls for service, we had 13 calls for service regarding rented motor-driven scooters on the streets of Gulf Shores. Of those, we did a review, and we basically determined that the cause of most all of them are careless driving and equipment violations. In some cases, the operator didn't have a helmet on, but these involve reckless driving, driving on sidewalks, driving on bike paths, so on and so forth. So we had 13 in 2020 alone. Then as far as rented scooter accidents, we had 18 total. Summary, we had eight injury accidents. Of those eight, two were airlifted by helicopter, three were transported by ambulance, and then again, the causes were careless driving and unskilled driving. We see a lot of times wide turns, driving in areas they shouldn't be, so on and so forth. So there's a summary of all 18 accidents that occurred on the streets of Gulf Shores during that time. I also have here is a short video, a compilation video of four incidents that occurred here in Gulf Shores. They were provided by a resident. All of these are unreported, and these four incidents occurred in one location in a three-week period. This one is three scooters driving through a stop sign. We have rain-slicking highways, pedestrians, and vehicles. This one is a scooter that struck a light pole, and in this particular case, the operator tried to use her feet as brakes. As she gathered herself here, went across the street and struck a driveway barrier, again, trying to use her feet for both balance and as brakes. Here's one where the operator was unable to make a maneuver the turn, went into private property, using his feet as brakes, and struck a palm tree. I don't know what they have against this palm tree, but this particular one, too, separate incident, struck the palm tree. Again, all four of those were unreported, as far as we know, to the police department. They were not in the summary that we reviewed and provided. So what we're proposing is an amendment to the current ordinance regarding rental, the rental of motor-driven cycles to take effect January 1st, 2022. In the interim, we're going to enforce the law. Alabama requires operators of a motor vehicle, regardless of the size, to include mopeds and pedal-driven cycles, to have a valid motorcycle endorsement in order to operate it. So the rental company is going to, we're going to require, the proposed ordinance would be to require them to obtain proof of a valid motorcycle license on the part of the renter. They would provide safety equipment. That safety equipment would include a helmet, safety goggles, and a vest for the operator to wear, maintain a log, and make it available for an inspection. And that log would include the cycle that was rented, along with a photocopy to include the motorcycle endorsement for the operator, the person who rented the motor-driven cycle. And then lastly, they would have to, it would require them to maintain a level of liability insurance, comprehensive liability insurance on the part of the, any rental company that we have. And then lastly, the renter would also sign a waiver that would, they would acknowledge and understand that they would not drive the scooter or the rented motor-driven cycle in a reckless manner, and they would also agree to wear the safety equipment provided while they're operating it. And then they would be also, that makes them also aware of the fine and the penalty associated with the ordinance. So lastly, what I have here is sort of a little bit of a definition, and the source for this is the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, the Motorcycle Operations Manual. Motor-driven cycle is every motorcycle, including every motor-driven scooter and every bicycle with motor attached. So Alabama does require that license endorsement, and this is not going to be unique to the ordinance itself. That's already in place. It's just probably not being enforced. A moped is considered a motor-driven cycle. Anyone 16-years or older would require that Class M, and then they have to possess it and then produce it to a law enforcement officer in the event that they're stopped. I might also add, this ordinance would also address if somebody from outside the city limits would establish a rental company, it would prohibit them from allowing their renters to drive into Gulf Shores. Let's say Orange Beach or somebody down Fort Morgan established businesses. This would prohibit them being able to drive these rented motor scooters here on the, on city streets. And I believe that's all I have. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dan. Council, before we take any action, is there any questions or any clarification or comments in particular that you would like to make?
Yeah, Dan, I have a question. You said that if someone else rents in another city, that they won't be allowed in here. Is that legal? How do we deal with that?
Well, the ordinance would call for the, it would prohibit them from operating on the streets of rented motor-driven cycles. So the way I understand the ordinance as proposed, it would, they would, what we would do if that would occur, you know, of course, we'd get the interpretation from the city attorney, and then we would notify any outside of our venue rental companies that this is going to be enforceable, and they may not require, you know, the state law is in place that requiring that motorcycle endorsement. We're going to remind them of that endorsement, the requirement for that endorsement.
Okay.
Dan, does ever, all 50 states and people visit have to have motorcycle endorsements?
So yes, they would. Not, the unique thing about Alabama, in states that I lived in, they didn't require a license, a motorcycle endorsement for under 50 CCs. They do require that in Alabama. So even guests coming from other states would be required to have that motorcycle endorsement. It's required by state law to have that here in Alabama. It'd be similar to operation of a car. They still have to have a driver's license in order to operate a vehicle on the streets of Alabama, highways.
Even if another state doesn't require?
Yeah, it's, in the conversation we had with the city attorney is it would require that.
Thank you.
Are these cycles permitted to operate everywhere in town that a motorized vehicle operates? Or are there any restrictions on where these can go and where they can't?
Well, they are restricted from bike paths and sidewalks. So the roadways, they are, a legal motor-driven cycle is legal to drive on the streets as long as it has a particular level of what they call CCs. So the zeros, we're primarily talking about the 49 CC units, and they are, when properly equipped, as far as, you know, the traffic safety matters, the lights, the blinkers and all that, they are suitable to drive on the streets. But this doesn't target, this doesn't address somebody who has a valid license operating their own motor-driven scooter. This ordinance applies to rented motor-driven scooters, motorcycles.
But are the people that live here that own one still have to comply?
They would have to...
The rules are no different.
Yeah, they would have to comply with having a valid motorcycle endorsement for their driver's license.
All right. The one thing that I remain a little confused about, and particularly the way this thing reads, a motor-driven bicycle. Now, we've got bicycles that have motorized assist, there's still pedal assist, but they have motors on them, and I don't know that we have any place of renting those, but I know we have a lot of those in our community. Does this have anything to do with a bicycle that has a motor on it?
The way I read the law and the guidance we were given, that the, let me back up here a little bit. One more. So it did, the law does specify in the motorcycle operations that a moped, it's every bicycle with motor attached. So the moped aspect of it would also be included, according to state law.
Okay, because that's, that's a change, because we're not required helmets for bicycles that don't get on the road. They just stay on the sidewalk. Now, is that a different?
That's probably, this is to operate on the roadways. So I would have to look further into it. Of course, it doesn't address private property in the ALIA manual, but it doesn't, it didn't address that in there. But secondary properties such as bike paths and things like that aren't addressed in the ALIA motor vehicle code.
Well, it would not be, I'm just curious if this interpretation would allow these rental scooters to operate on bike, on bike paths?
I think there's a prohibition on doing that anyway. The, having the scooters on the bike paths, I think there are already warning signs and probably an ordinance that enforces that or outlines that.
Okay, well, I think it will get confusing to our local folks that own a bicycle that has motor assist to pedal.
Right.
That are using our sidewalks now or not allowed to get on the road because they're not wearing a helmet. So I think some differentiation to keep the rental stuff off the sidewalk, if that's not already here, needs to be.
Right. And in some cases, the pedal ones also are electric driven. So this, this only the way I understand it applies to gas with regard to the CCs on it, and a lot of those are anymore, a lot of those are electric.
Thank you. That does give a differentiation that I did not think about.
Dan, do we have any statistics on the age group of the people that were involved in receiving traffic citations and accidents, and was alcohol involved in any of them?
I can't stand before you with facts regarding that, but, and the difficult side to research that is when we issue a traffic citation to somebody who would be operating one of these, we normally don't list the owner there. So it's, it would be in a pool of traffic citations, a very large pool of traffic citations that are written annually. You know, so it's possible that, I'd say it's likely that, and ironically, all of the traffic complaints came in after March or May 1st of last year, when the beaches opened back up, and then the accidents seemed to have started. I think the first accident, I believe, was on March 8th, which would have been right around the beginning of spring break.
Yeah, I was just curious if this was mainly younger kids that are irresponsible, or if it involved actual older adults?
Well, I don't know that age matters. I think the most important factor here is the skill set of the operator. The, and by requiring that motorcycle endorsement, they have gone through, in some, in all cases, a review by a state employee who reviewed their competence with regard to that operator's license. Whereas here, as you can see in three of the four incidents, they were using their feet as brakes. So they were, it was four incidents, they were using their feet as brakes, so they were, it, it was unskilled, and that, that's what makes it preventable, is we're gonna, we're, we're gonna take the unskilled aspect out of this and require that motorcycle license on, you know, in the interim.
Yeah, that's a state law anyway, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Have some comments and questions?
Go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm, I'm gonna have a bit to say. You go ahead.
Okay. Dan?
Sure.
If, if this ordinance passes as it's written, do y'all as a police department have plans to maybe monitor that area more with patrol officers or something?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, beginning next Monday, we're implementing a traffic unit here in Gulf Shores. Our, our, and Chief Delmore will, will reiterate this, our complaints regarding driving, reckless driving and, and aggressive driving and, and all those things are skyrocketing here in Gulf Shores. So we, we came up with a solution that we are implementing a traffic unit beginning next Monday. Traffic officers are going to be in unmarked vehicles and, and enforcing all aspects of the traffic laws, focusing on not only the violation but high accident corridors. So, all of that is going to come into play, and this will be an aspect of the traffic unit.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
I, I have a few comments and questions. One of these is, I certainly cannot support this ordinance as it is written, because although we have taken steps in here to enforce or to make the renter or the operating company comply, even at the end of the year, they are out of business, whether they comply, if there's no more accidents, if there's fifty more accidents. These people have nothing to do after a year because their business will be closed, and I can't support government telling a business they cannot operate in this town if they are acting in the best, you know, in the best interest that they can. Guns don't kill people. People kill people. Scooters don't kill people. People riding scooters have accidents and may behave irresponsibly. I believe that the operators are doing the best they can, maybe not the best they can, but I know that they're certainly have an increased awareness of the situation, in light of the fact that over forty-seven hundred rentals took place, and we have less than two percent, or what, not even a percentage, not even a, I think two tenths of one percent is the accident ratio. We are taking a hammer to kill a mosquito here. I cannot support this ordinance that it is written for those reasons, and if I were to even consider supporting it, I would have to strike the language that we would no longer allow them to operate after January of twenty twenty-two, or anyone else for that matter. I think this is an enforcement issue that the operator can do a better job trying to maintain and enforce, and that's where I'll leave my comments. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Well, I have a little different opinion, Steve, respectfully, so, I, I just believe that our situation of traffic in major highways going through town is not going to change, and putting more unqualified vehicles and unqualified operators, which we've seen on the road, regardless what percentage of the renters are, I think is dangerous to the community. I think it's disruptive to the back areas along East and West, First and Second Street, where the rental is and where you see this video of these accidents. I think it is irresponsible for us as a community to allow something that dangerous and that disruptive in our particular situation. And I don't see, the operator can do a fantastic job. He can do much better than he's done. I believe that, and I agree with you there, but the situation doesn't change. The infrastructure doesn't change. The amount of traffic's not going to change. If anything, it'll get worse, not better. So I have a little different opinion on that, Steve, respectfully so.
Is there any way we can modify this to rentals only with people that have the motorcycle endorsement?
That is what's going to be enforced in the interim, yes. We're going to require, they're, they're going to keep the log, and then any, they will only be allowed to rent people with a motorcycle endorsement on their license.
Should we reevaluate this after the interim's up?
That would be your call. We, we certainly would be open to it, but that would be the council's call.
Counsel, any other questions for, for Dan? Dan, stay up there, please.
Sure.
This is opportunity, it's a public, a public meeting, public hearing opportunity for anyone that wants to discuss this or have comments to make, particularly the operator or anyone else with any opinion. It's a good time for you to come forward and step to this microphone up here. We can't hear you from your seat, so you have to walk up to the microphone and make any comments you have in mind.
Fallon Young resident. So currently, you're saying they have not been mandating whether they have any motorcycle endorsement to be able to rent these? I don't know. In the conversation I have with the owner, he has not been enforcing law. We were both unaware of it at the time. Okay. Thank you.
Unaware of the law?
Unaware of the law, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Counsel, my name's Ike Williams. I have a beat service here. I've been in the rental business for forty years. I have an office down at West Beach, and I see these idiots, you know, on the scooters every day, but I do know that we are in a resort town, you know, so we either need to turn this place into a convalescent home, or we need to, you know, allow some of these businesses. You know, to put a man out of business, I think is wrong. I think there's some other ways of going about this, but, you know, we can't police people, you know, themselves, so my biggest thing is I'd hate to see us put this man out of business. I don't know him. I get a ton of calls, but what are we gonna do next? Are we gonna be, you know, issuing life jackets to people? The more people we have drowned on the beach where they can't even go to the beach without a life jacket? So I just think there's something we could do instead of taking this evasive action, and that's just a comment I have in my, you know. Like I said, of all the years I've been on the beach, I've been to every rental town, yeah, every place where I rent scooters and mopeds, bikes, everything, so I just don't know where we go next if we, you know, take these out. I think there's a way of restricting them a little bit more. It's just like, I was in the jet ski business for years and years. I got out of it, for me personally, when Yamaha and Kawasaki started making them with excess of ninety horsepower, so that put me out, because I personally am not going to put a person on a, or a twelve year old on a ski that goes, you know, seventy miles an hour, so that's just my comments, guys. Thanks for y'all's service.
Thank you, Ike. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mayor, Counsel, Greg Adams, here in the Council of Alabama Business Chamber. Just a quick comment. Thank you for the background discussion tonight on this topic. In the interest of small business and locally owned small businesses, I, I'm not sure if it was Counsel McGarrett or Sinak who said, hey, I love the idea of, you know, the, the regulations that need to be put in place, the licensing that's required, those type things, because that is just like allowing, you know, my fourteen year old daughter, who's never gotten behind the wheel, just to go out and drive. I understand that needs to be, be, be put into place and certainly support that a hundred percent, but again, I like the idea of a possible, you know, reevaluation after that part goes into effect. You know, if this, if, if, if the licensing and the requirements of the, of the, you know, addendum on the license to be able to operate in these vehicles is in place and is checked and is required to be, be had, you know, what if, what if those instances go down to next to nothing or, or not, or zero? I would just hate to see a small business, you know, go out, be, be forced out of business before that was put into place to see if that rectified the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to make a comment here. We, we're not, you know, public comment, we're going to be open until the last person here is gone that won't, that has spoken, wants to, but Steve, we sat in a meeting this morning with our attorney, and there was a discussion about regardless of the term of this, there is a due process we have to go through. If it goes a year and this, we've signed this and said at the end of the year it goes away, it can't go away till we have a due process hearing. Did, did I understand that right?
Yeah, yeah, even during the course of this year, if it just is not getting better, yeah, we have the ability to bring this back up and suspend it immediately.
But there will be, when you bring it back up, regardless of it's the end of the term or not, there'll be a due process that you have to go through.
Correct.
So there will be an opportunity, a requirement, not an opportunity, a requirement for us to reconsider this at that point in time. Philip, you were in the meeting, did you understand that the same way?
Yes, I did.
So, this is, there will be an opportunity to have a rediscussion on this at any time before it is suspended. So I just want to make that clear, because I think that's a big consideration. We're suspending it, we're not giving any opportunity to react to an improved process, but indeed we are. It's required. So I just wanted-
We will be required to, to review this once more before we suspend it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think it's a two week hearing. I, I don't remember, do you remember specifics?
Yeah, we'll notice it just like this.
Yeah.
Where it's within a two week period.
So it won't go away till we have another meeting for reconsideration, because we have to. So, I just, any-
Just a question. If that indeed is the case, that we have to go through the due process meeting anyway, why don't we just strike that language from this ordinance, knowing that we'll have to revisit it in January anyway if we want to institute that change because of noncompliance or not the desirable results that we have from it?
Say, say that again, Jason.
Why don't we just not have the January, I forget the date, January of twenty twenty two, where it states that they will no longer be able to be in business? Why don't we strike that from the ordinance? Because regardless of whether it's in the ordinance or not, there will have to be a due process meeting to affirm that position. So I don't see the benefit of us making that part of the ordinance now, when we're going to have to reaffirm that, that the case, you know, the, the facts regarding the case in a due process meeting prior to implementing the cessation of that business at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, it was originally put in for that date to put this owner on notice that come January twenty twenty-two, we don't intend to renew it, and so it was just to give them a warning that's coming up. I think they've gotten this warning.
I think they have.
Yes.
But Dan, regardless, we have to follow the laws. This, this is, we don't have a choice in the matter. They have to have the motorcycle endorsement, now that we're all aware of it here.
Yes, there also, there's also some protective requirements that would, are needed under law.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, on that, okay.
Which this would provide, that they would provide it, because I don't think most people that are on vacation or are out looking to do something for the day would think to bring their helmet, their, their, and their glasses, safety glasses with them. The, the vest is sort of an added feature.
Jason, one comment on that. I, I think in listening and understanding, any type of decision prior to the end of the year would be because of an incident or because of something that's going on, but it's guaranteed at the end of the year, we will have that meeting. And that's the only thing that is in here to say, that everybody knows at the end of the year, we're going to begin the discussion of the suspension of the license, and everyone's on notice of that, because we know that's going to happen. Anything in the interim that happens will be event driven, if that makes sense. So I, my personal thoughts is the way it's written is the way it should be written.
I just want to make sure I understand this before we listen and vote any, vote on it. We're not putting him out of business. We're giving him a criteria to make his business, the people that rent motorcycles or scooters to understand what they have to do to help him stay in business. He should be the one that's telling them, look, I won't come down next year. You need to do what you're supposed to do. So we're not putting him out of business. We're giving him an opportunity to help make his business better with the people that rent his product. Is that the way I understood it?
Better and safer.
What'd you say, Steve?
Better and safer.
Better and safer, yes. He's got a year to do that unless it gets really bad before then.
If I, if I could add one thing, I didn't, I didn't clear, I didn't state this earlier. Of all the accidents that occurred, none of them that we reviewed were the fault of another motorist. Every accident that we had, that we had reported, were the result of the operator of the rented motor driven cycle. It was their fault, that we didn't see any that another party ran into a, a scooter or a, a rented scooter. So it, you know, we're, we're not here talking about the safety of, we, we are talking about the safety of the operators, but not in a sense that it's other motorists are striking them. They are striking the other motorists, parked cars, you know, the objects and things like that.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Counsel, David Parker. I live at five hundred East First Avenue. Those were my videos that I provided. I have plenty more of them having violation. I've talked to the owner over two years, probably five, six times about this, even asked him to put out cones and let the rental people go between them to see if they're able to ride the scooters or not, and he just rolls his eyes and claims that he has nothing. His agreement, current agreement with the operator says he, the owner has no liability for any damage that the renter poses on anything. They've ran over my mailbox, had to put my mailbox up. As you see, I've got several of them hitting more of my palm trees. These scooters cost him six hundred dollars a piece. He gets them from China, and, you know, it's just a commodity, and in my experience in talking with him, he, he has done very little to motivate these kids. Mr. Sinak, they're usually anywhere from sixteen to twenty-five year olds that have been in my yard. My wife and I, we stop on the street every time we see one because we don't know if we're going to get hit or not. They're just very unable to operate these vehicles. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, I'm Jean Austin. I live on East Second Avenue, all the way at the end, and I'm in a point where they try to turn around. Even after they stop, they can't make that turn on the width of the road. They run into my yard. I put a chain fence kind of up. They've torn that down on more than one occasion, it's been knocked down. I have lights on the top of them, so when it's getting dust, they can see them, and those get broken. And the people that have been the most destructive have not been the teenagers, it's been people in their thirties, forties. The one lady, she was trying to learn to ride a motorcycle, and her boyfriend or significant other said she wasn't doing well, so he thought he'd bring her out on the scooter. She didn't do good on the scooter either. So it is a skill that they're not obtaining before they get on them, and they just think it's fun. They come down, and I can hear a bunch of them talking when I'm on my front deck, oh, I got it up to fifty miles an hour. Our speed limit's twenty-five, and most of them do not stop at the stop sign. It's like they feel like, okay, this is just a fun thing. They don't take it serious that this is a serious operation of a vehicle. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jamie Bowman. Terry and I own the business that we're referencing. First comment would just be in regard to Mr. David Parker's claim that the individuals are between sixteen and twenty-five. That is inaccurate. We have a thumb drive with pictures of each driver's license, and we do not rent anyone under the age of eighteen. The second issue is that our units do not satisfy the definition of motor driven cycle. Here it says they need to weigh less than two hundred pounds. Ours weigh two hundred and twenty-five, so our units wouldn't even qualify for this definition.
Say that again, now?
I don't know what you said.
Article C in the proposed ordinance, the definition of motor driven cycle, which is what?
Oh, in this?
We don't, we don't, our units don't satisfy that definition, because our units are over two hundred pounds, they're two hundred and twenty-five pounds.
Do, you, you mentioned you have records of everyone you rent to, and you, you know how old they are, because you look at their driver's license. Do you require that they have some type of motor, motorcycle endorsement on their license?
We do not. I do have all forty-seven hundred records with me today. We were not aware of the law, because it just changed in twenty fifteen, when we originally started this business on Dolphin Island in twenty thirteen, that was not in fact.
I have, I have a question. You said that your units would be excluded under section C of this ordinance, but wouldn't that, in turn, I guess this may be a question for the chief, or assistant chief, wouldn't that qualify as motorcycle under section B of the ordinance?
My loose interpret, interpretation be, yes, it would.
Excluded for C, but your units would be qualified under motorcycle section B, the way I agree to interpret it, but-
The way ALIA defines motorcycle, they have to be over, ours are only one point nine horsepower and forty-nine CC. We also don't satisfy that definition. We are not a motorcycle or a motor driven cycle.
What are you?
We're a scooter, but there's no definition that would govern our units in this proposed ordinance.
How fast will your scooters go?
Thirty. If you're light, maybe thirty- If you're light, maybe 35. The fastest I can get them is 35. They only have 1.9 horsepower. They're less powerful than your lawnmower.
But do you, you do recognize that they are dangerous when not operated correctly?
Yes, sir.
To the operator and to others that may be walking on the sidewalk?
Yes, sir. But I just wanted to call attention to the fact that of 4,700 rentals, we only had, I've only been given access to 15 records, two of which weren't ours. And of those 13, you know, in relation to other businesses that operate jet skis and other rental items, our accident rating is very, very low. But we're willing to implement additional measures.
Were the 4,700 rentals just for the year 2020?
Yes, sir.
Dan, would her scooters come under the state law?
The, in our conversation with the city attorney, he said they apply, they would apply to the state law, and it would require, because I even asked him about the 49 cc, because a lot of states do not require motorcycle endorsement on the license for under 49 cc, 49 or below. His, his guidance was that Alabama does require it.
But you don't feel that yours do meet the, or required by state law?
No, sir.
To have the endorsement?
No, sir.
We need a clarification on that.
What cc is your motorcycle? If it's a horsepower, it still has a cc on it.
A 49.
It's 49 cc?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's, that falls under the law, don't it?
I believe so, yes. I, I believe so. And I, and I addressed that specifically with the city attorney, and he said it is required. The license endorsement is required. Alabama does not have that provision in the law.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else with any comments? If you have anything else, ma'am?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions or comments?
Well, I, I just, I see this as twofold, and I don't necessarily put the fault on the business owner, but you, then they turn these vehicles over to drivers, and we can get the skill level up. But what we don't change is the environment that we offer for those folks to come here on vacation and ride a scooter. And you have Highway 59 and the beach road, which moves all of our traffic through town. It's an extremely congested traffic way. And in my opinion, it's a, it's a hazard and a very unsafe environment to co-mingle those folks and to put, have that environment with, with that risk. And the, the records, the percentages may be low, but when you have bodily injuries and you have people lifelighted, and I know accidents can happen, anything, but we're, we're putting folks at a high risk there, and we're putting other people that aren't on the scooters in, at risk. So if someone came here before us today with another application for a business license for another rental scooter business, I would be very challenged to support that, knowing the position of our police department, the information that's been collected, and the information that's been shared, and knowing the risks that are out there. I would have a very difficult time issuing a new license. So, you know, I, I think the, the long-term message is important. I say short-term, really, if it's a, a year from now, that it's important. And, you know, that it gives the business owner time to react. And if we strike that from the language, and we get 10 months down the road, and then we confirm this decision, then that business owner is right back in the same position with assets and equipment and an operating business that they have to react to. But just my opinion.
And that's why we did that, yes.
I think it's, and that is why we did that. But I, I think it's a, I think it's a very unsafe environment, not just for the riders, but for other people as well.
And after reading this, I would say that, that your scooters do come under the state law. It's, it's not a motorcycle. It's a, it's a a motor-driven cycle. And it specifies there, be less than 5 horsepower and the CCs and- Yeah, okay, that's just one aspect.
Well, it would seem to me, at least my opinion, I think this is a really important ordinance for us to take action on. But I think that very possibly we need to define it a little bit better and more clearly point out what we're trying to do. If this, that's just my, just my opinion. And maybe just put this on hold until we can get confirmation that what we're trying to accomplish is accomplished. That will, but I believe strongly that we need to take action on this. So it's not like I'm saying I don't want to do it. I'm saying I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way, and we've got the right language in here. So that's my thoughts, and I don't make motions. So I don't know if anyone agrees with that or if not. From a council decision, this is not for public.
Well, I agree with you fully, Mayor. I think we need to make sure where we at, and we have all the language like it needs to be, whether it be her motorcycle or what we're aiming at, so.
Well, and, and again, our attorney has said that this handles exactly what we were trying to do. So again, I don't know about the 200 pound, but that's the only discrepancy that I see potentially in this that I see as being a challenge. It's to, to the decision of this board, this council up here, if we want to take action or if we want to delay and go back to the attorney. So I need someone to help make a decision whether to delay or take action.
Well, make a motion that we delay it.
We, we, then we have to, what do we have to do? That we have to go into a-
I'm not sure we have to suspend the rules to do that.
If we're going to delay.
No, we don't.
Do we need to suspend the rules, Mark?
Not to, not to delay it. No, you just need a motion and-
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, let's like to make a motion to delay this until we can clarify about the weight rating to make sure everything we're doing is, is legal.
And I also think that that would be the opportunity for us to clearly define the process at the end of this term or this period or what the expectation will be so that we communicate that clearly to the business owner as well as any additional business license applications that may be interested in this type of business. I would support delaying this action as well.
So that is a second?
That's a second.
Okay. That's what it sounded like. I just want to be sure. So we have a motion and a second to delay this until, until legal review helps us qualify some of the questions that were asked. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? This will be put off until we get further consideration, and we'll put it back on a Cal meeting when we have something further to discuss. Appreciate everybody and their, and their input tonight. Thank you for everything, Dan. Good job. Thank you. Thank you to, to the owner. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name. Thank you. Thank you for being here. So with that, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is a franchise renewal for collection disposal of non-resident for garbage and trash. Mark?
Other than we need to make sure we include Baldwin County Container as a fourth franchisee for this ordinance, no changes from last week. They were another franchise, a potential franchise that wanted to do commercial hauling and had applied for the CND by mistake. So they want to make sure that they are considered in the commercial franchise as well. And we've had no issues with them.
What's the name of that company?
Baldwin County Container.
So is that in the resolution?
It's in there in here.
Okay.
It's in here.
All right. Move that we suspend rules of procedure that we may consider this ordinance?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, Wanda? Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Mr. Sinak?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye.
The rules are suspended. We're free to consider ordinance 2010.
A question, Mr. Mayor. Does, since we delayed the other one, does it remain 29, 2009? This one is indeed 2010?
We do need to change the number.
So it's 29. Good catch, Steve.
Yep.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2009-21 as presented?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance as submitted. Change the number to 2009, as Steve mentioned.
Right.
One.
Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Mr. Sinak?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye.
Ordinance 2009 is approved and adopted. Mark, you got another one?
No changes from last week. This is strictly the awarding of a bid to Bill Smith Electric in the amount, not to C300, $20,000 to repair turtle lighting that was damaged from Hurricane Sally. And this is reimbursed through our insurance.
Thank you, Mark. That's Resolution 6378.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6378 and waive its reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6378 is approved. Next, 6379, Mark?
The next two items for y'all to vote tonight are professional services contracts, both related to the 4th Street Bridge. This bridge has been out for over 10 years. The first one is Jade Consulting. They have a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000 to do some conceptual renderings and cost estimation for both the 4th Street Bridge as well as some pedestrian improvements to the Windmill Ridge Road Bridge. And the second one is Skipper Consulting, and they'll actually perform the traffic study specific to the 4th Street Bridge, and we'll be looking at vehicular and pedestrian safety.
And those are two separate? The, the very first one, 6378, is, so the Resolution 6378 is presented, and that one covers everybody except Skipper?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt Resolution 6379.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion?
One comment. We did talk about the need to have the Skipper study and the Jade Consulting study include the bridge over Windmill Ridge Road as that's a kind of a dangerous blind curve. If we're increasing traffic over the bridge, if it gets open to vehicle or traffic, that we need to study that and make sure that we're protecting the safety.
It is included in both.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 6379. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of second? 63, any extension, 6379 is approved. Mark, you got one more? This is Skipper. And so 6380 is what Mark discussed about hiring Skipper to do a transportation study related to these changes.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, separate.
Separate, this 6380, this resolution is 6380, a brand-new resolution.
Yes.
So we need a motion.
Move to approve that.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve 6380 as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6380 is approved.
Mark, when do we expect these two to be completed, these two studies?
I'd say we're going to have the preliminary findings back, and we'll have probably within, I'd say, 30 to 60 days. And then we will be scheduling a public involvement meeting. We'd like to have something to present, but we'll get the feedback from both organ, both groups. We have one that wanted pedestrian, I only one wanted vehicular and pedestrian. So we're going to get, include both organizations into that, that discussion. So I'd say with that, it's another 30 days. So I think we'd probably see the recommendations within six months, final recommendations back to the council, and I'll present those to the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Next item, we have a resolution authorizing surplus to surplus in donation of unneeded fire, fire engine equipment. Chief Shepherd, hadn't had a chance to call you that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for your consideration is the surplus in donation of a 2006 year fire pump, pumper truck. What we'd like to do is donate this truck to the Town of Dolphin Island Fire Department. Tonight, I do have the Public Safety Director, Troy Gorlot, in attendance. We just feel that this truck would, would help their department better serve their community.
And we, we were surplusing that regardless?
Yes, sir, it was.
We're surplusing it, we're, we're donating it to them.
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you, Melvin. That's Resolution 6381.
Motion to adopt Resolution 6381.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6381 is approved. Got one more?
Yes, sir. The next item is the surplus in donation of unused air packs that we have, the Scotts. They were replaced a couple of years ago when the purchase of the MSA packs were made. We would like to donate these to the Orange Beach Fire Department for their training center. They're currently the only fire department within the county that still use Scott air packs, and we think this will help them out with training.
Thank you, Melvin. That's Resolution 6382.
Move?
Go ahead.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6383 and waive its reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6382 is approved. That concludes all of our new business. Steve, you got any committee report, or anybody in the council got any committee report?
Yeah, I have a couple. Cindy, if you could come up, talk about the sales tax holiday.
This weekend is the annual sales tax holiday. It begins Friday, February 26, and it ends Sunday, February 28. And on the screen, you can see the list of items that are covered, predominantly items $60 or less, and those are mainly batteries and tarp, plastic sheeting, et cetera. And then there, there is one item that is allowed with a sales price of $1,000 or less, and that's any portable generator and power cords. So all of these would be very helpful in the event of a weather-related problem.
And that's what date?
It begins Friday, February 26 at midnight, and it goes until the end of Sunday, February 28.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
And Mr. Mayor, had Mark Ackerman to report on a public meeting that we're having Thursday?
Right. In this building at 4 o'clock this Thursday, it'll be February the 25th. The city and Volkerd or Engineer of Record will be presenting multiple projects that we received the bill grant on